Good evening, everybody. We'll start the agenda review session for Wednesday, February 17, 2016. The ordinances on second reading: 601, Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic; Schedule 26, No parking, certain hours, alternate parking, street cleaning program, Nielsen Street. 602, Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic; Schedule 24, No parking at any time, Nielsen Street. 603, Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 8, Health and Safety Special Regulations Governing Dumpsters in Certain Zoning Districts. Orders is on first reading: 604, In Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic; Schedule 32, No parking, emergency streets, Scott Street, Plum Street. 605, In Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic; Schedule 32, No parking, emergency streets, Hamilton Street. 606, Orders authorizing the guarantee by the City of New Brunswick in the County of Millsack, State of New Jersey of not exceeding 170 million aggregate principal amount of city guaranteed parking revenue refunding bond, Series 26, of the Parking Authority of the City of New Brunswick. Resolutions 644, approved agenda meeting; 645, approved payroll; 646, authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates; 647, Award Professional Service Agreement, to Pitt and Young Planning Consultants Incorporated for 2016 Review of Site Plans and Subdivisions; Planning Review, Term, January 1, 2016, December 31, 2016, Fair and Open. 648, Award Professional Service Agreement to Delaware Rowing Engineering Incorporated for 2016 Conflict Engineering Review of Site Plans and Subdivision; Engineering Review, Term, January 1, 2016, December 31, 2016, Fair and Open. 649, Approved Amendment Resolution R 021562, Pay Additional Funds for January 2016 Bills with Max Or Plus LTD Limited, Prescription Plan Services Not to Exceed 6,23393. 650, Approved Payment for Emergency Procurement and Water Utility for Crash Truck for Emergency Traffic Control, Northern Water Main Great Repairs on Route 1. Atlas Flashing Supply Company Incorporated, Not to Exceed 3,550, Purchase Order is D 85359. 51, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 121549, Reason to Pay Additional Legal Fees in Amount of 2,346 to Benedictine Altman. Police Director Anthony Caputo, Caputo on the Matter of Steve Middleton, Pressed the City of New Brunswick from 9,000, 93450 to 12,000, 2850. 652, Approved Emergency Temporary Appropriations for 2016. 653, It's pulled as unnecessary. 654, Authorized Lease of Copy Machine from Department of Public Works for Rico USA Incorporated for One Rico MC, 4054 SP Digital Copyer System, Not to Exceed 156 per month commencing March 1, 2016, and ending February 29, 2020. Forty-eight month contract, State Contract is 40467-G2075, Copyers Maintenance and Supplies. 655, Authorized Lease a Copy Machine from Division of Purchasing for Rico USA Incorporated for One Rico, 3554 SP Digital Copyer System, Not to Exceed 12438 per month commencing March 1. 2016 ending February 29, 2020, It's a 48-month contract, State Contract is 40467-G2075, Copyers Maintenance and Supplies. 656, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 101519, Reason to Pay Invoices for 2015 in Amount of 10,292 with Longo Electric and Cannibal Incorporated for Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Maintenance, Not to Exceed 10,292. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 657, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 121517, To Pay Additional Legal Fees in Amount of 2,397 to Benedictine Altman. For Police Director Anthony Caputo on the Matter of Victor Rodriguez, Pressed the City of New Brunswick from 16,141 to 18,53850. 658, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 071554, Reason to Pay Invoices for Sewer Repairs for 2015 in the Amount of 10,9151 with BMW Construction Co., New Jersey, for Equipment and Labor, Not to Exceed 10,9151. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 659, Authorized Purchase by Police Department under State Contract A, 81348, from Landigan and Associates Incorporated for 24 Bulletproof Vest for the Police Department, Not to Exceed 660, Approved Purchase by Police Department under State Contract A, 89850-N0003, Software License and Related Services from Del Marting LP. Radical Renewal Agreement for Software License for the Police Department, Term is 12-month period commencing April 1, 2016, and ending March 31, 2017, Not to Exceed 34,87483. 661, Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by Rutgers Project Sunshine, Location New World Park Pavilion and Track for Wishes 5K Run, 1 Mile Fun Walk to Benefit Local New Brunswick Children's Hospitals, Date is Sunday, March 6, 2016, Time is 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. 662, Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by United Methodist Insurance of New Brunswick, Location is Monument Square Park, Easter Sunrise Service, Sunday, March 27, 2016, Time is 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 a.m. 663, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 021612, Reason to Pay Additional Legal Fees in Amount of 3,000, 24907 to the Department Law Firm LLC for Special Counsel, City of New Brunswick versus Marv Act Construction Corporation, From 30,16769 to 33,41776. 664, Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by Inter-Denominational, I didn't think I was going to get that, Ministerial Alliance of Greater New Brunswick and Facility, Location is Boyd Parfum Union Event with Praise Singing Speakers and RWJUH Health Information Table, The Date, Saturday, 8th, August 27, 2016, Rain Day is Saturday, September 10, 2016, Time, 10:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. 665, Authorized Tax Litigation Transfer Overpayments on Several Tax and Utility Accounts. 666, Approved Request for Street Closing requested by Related Mount Paul, Lomond Catholic Church, Location, Mars Street, Short Street, Livingston Avenue, Good Friday Procession, Friday, March 25, 2016, 7:15 p.m. to 8:15 p.m. 667, Approved Request for Use of City Property requested by Tree of Light Church, Location in Warmer Memorial Park, Religious Services, Saturday, June 11, July 9, August 13, 2016, Rain Day, Sunday, June 12, July 10, August 14, 2016, Time is 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. 668, Approved Request for Street Closing requested by Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey, for Rutgers Day, Saturday, April 30, 2016, Location, Hamilton Street between College Avenue and George Street for Rutgers Day, Time is 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Location, Senior Street to College Avenue to Seminary Place to Hamilton Street for the Rutgers Day Parade, Time is 9:30 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. for the Parade, the Police Expert Duty. 669, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 111509, Reason to Pay Additional Legal Fees in Amount of 925 to MDV O Squire, Special Counsel for Border Veterans Hearing, From 5,82992 to 6,75492. 670, Approved Off-Premise Raffle, 50/50 at Rico's Italian Restaurant on 103 Church Street for New Brunswick Road, The Date is May 10, 2016. 671, Approved On-Premise Raffle at 94 Somerset Street, St. Peter the Apostle Church, Date is April 15, 2016. 672, Approved On-Premise Raffle at 94 Somerset Street, for St. Peter's Church, April 15, 2016. 673, Approved On-Premise Raffle, 94 Somerset Street, St. Peter's Church, Date is April 15, 2016. 674, Approved ABC Liquor License Renewal, 2015-2016, For Rabat Chakara, Tandarika, Taya Kazia, Liquor License Number 121433033002, Sorry if I'm screwing up your reading. 675, Approved Water Contract with UACO Water Technologies Incorporated for Maintenance and Support for the MemCor membrane filtration system, 12-month period commencing February 18, 2016, and ending February 7, 2017, Specification Number 49916RFP, Not to Exceed 27,000, Fair[552.66][552.66][S01. and Open. 676, Authorized Payment for Emergency Procurement, Public Works Repair Parts for Snow Cloud Vehicles depending winter storm with NAPA Auto Parts, Not to Exceed $222, Purchase Order[566.04][566.04][S01. D85669. 677, Approved Professional Service Agreement Innovative Data Solutions Incorporated, Doing Business as Powered DMS Incorporated for Proprietary Software Module for the Police Department, Term is 3-year period commencing March 1, 2016, and ending March, February 28, 2019,[582.72][582.72][S01. not to exceed 3,000,215. 678, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 021558, Reason to Extend the Contract for a 12-month period commencing February 19, 2016, and ending February 8, 2017, in the Amount of $500,[597.62][597.62][S01. with Power Plus Translation Incorporated for Telephonic Interpretation for the Department[602.51][602.51][S01. of Planning, Community, and Economic Development, Not to Exceed $500. 679, Approved Request for Use of City Sidewalk requested by Community Baptist Church of Somerset, Location Sidewalk in Front of Train Station, For Distribution of Religious Literature and[617.82][617.82][S01. Clothing to the Meeting Home, Date Saturday, March 5, 2016, Rain Day is Saturday, April[623.04][623.04][S01. 2, 2016, Time is 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.[626.00][626.00][S01. 680, Approved All-Premise Raffle, 50/50 at 222 Livingston Avenue, the Emmett Memorial[631.82][631.82][S01. Temple, The Date is May 3, 2016.[634.37][634.37][S01. 681, Approved Water Contract at New World Peril LLC with Restaurant Engineering and[638.32][638.32][S01. Expert Services.[639.54][639.54][S01. Marv Act Construction Corporation versus City of New Brunswick, Not to Exceed 27,500,[645.12][645.12][S01. Fair and Open.[646.54][646.54][S01. 682, Resolution to Approve Adoption of Millsack County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation[652.87][652.87][S01. Plan for 2015.[656.25][656.25][S01. 683, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 121535, Reason Change in Allocation Amount,[661.50][661.50][S01. With Millsack County for 2016-2017, New Brunswick Alliance on Substance Abuse Prevention. The Cash Match is 9,75850, the Grant is 39,034.[673.00][673.00][S01. 684, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 081538, Change Order Number 1 with Blackrock Enterprises[679.62][679.62][S01. LLC, For Handy Street Storm Sewer Improvement, Specification Number 882-15, the Amount[685.62][685.62][S01. 6,58173.[688.12][688.12][S01. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of[691.41][691.41][S01. the original contract.[692.82][692.82][S01. 685, Approved Amendment of Resolution R 061549, Change Order Number 1, Credit with Dan[699.54][699.54][S01. Swazi Swayze and Son Incorporated for 2015 Traffic Line Spreading, Specification Number[704.50][704.50][S01. 887-15, Credit Amount is 1,08964.[708.82][708.82][S01. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of[712.00][712.00][S01. the original contract.[714.04][714.04][S01. 686, Approved Water Contract with Hatchmont McDonald LLC for 2016 Diselenian Supplemental[719.41][719.41][S01. Engineering Services, Specification Number 901-16RFP, Not to Exceed 70,000, Fair and[726.75][726.75][S01. Open. Uh, I hope it's to be discussed by the Council is the discussion of the City Market Increase Proposed Boundary Expansion. Okay? Good evening, is the clerk police phone roll?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi?
Present.
Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised that the Notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with and satisfied that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick and the City Clerk has replaced our appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces and for all those in the armed forces who lost their lives. We have minutes from January 6, 2016, can I get a motion on the minutes?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Orders is on second reading, we have 601, Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic; Schedule 26, No parking certain hours, Alternate Parking Street Cleaning Program, Nielsen Street. Would anybody in the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody like to comment on the ordinance? Seeing done?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 602, Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 8, Vehicles and Traffic; Schedule 24, No parking at any time, Nielsen Street. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public? Seeing done?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 603, Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 8, Health and Safety Special Regulations Governing Dumpsters in Certain Zoning Districts. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Yes, sir, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, my name is Charles Cradville from New Brunswick. If you could just summarize what is changing, why this ordinance is being adopted?
Mr. Peletti, please.
Yes, please, the council, this ordinance has two things. One, it corrects an old ordinance which had the improper designation, zoning designation that changed, so we're just updating it to meet the existing zoning designations. Also, we're increasing the fee from 20 to 25 dollars per dumpster.
So, uh, who is affected by this? Does this mean all, anyone who wants a dumpster in any place in New Brunswick, or does it all make sense?
Who will be affected by this?
Essentially, anyone outside of the zoning districts, the intent of the ordinance was to manage dumpsters at one time before they were managed, people were dropping dumpsters on streets, they didn't intend it, so the intention is just to, uh, we're not changing how the ordinance works, it's just all really is increasing the fee from 20 to 25 dollars, otherwise the enforcement is the same. And then, we're just cleaning up the fact that they were old industrial zone designations and we're just reflecting the new. There's no change in the footprint of anything, not even the designation.
So it applies to every geography in New Brunswick, citywide?
Yes. Thank you. Well, anybody else on the ordinance? Seeing done?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Orders is on first reading: 604, Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 8, Vehicles and Traffic; Schedule 32, No parking, emergency streets, Scott Street, Plum Street.
Move the ordinance setting down March 2 at 6:30 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 605, Orders to amend and supplement revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic; Schedule 32, No parking, emergency streets, Hamilton Street.
Move the ordinance setting down March 2 at 6:30 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 606, Orders authorizing the guarantee by the City of New Brunswick in the County of Millsack, State of New Jersey of not exceeding 170 aggregate principal amount of city guaranteed parking revenue refunding bonds, Series 2016, of the Parking Authority of the City of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance setting down March 2 at 6:30 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We now have resolutions, uh, number 644 to 686, or 653 need pulled. Would anybody from the public like to speak on any particular word, uh, resolution we're seeing, please step up to the microphone, yes, sir.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, 648 is, uh, hiring a conflict engineer. It's my understanding the city engineer is, uh, you know, not going to be returning to work. Can you give me an update on, uh, the, you know, recruitment of a new city engineer? Uh, it's my understanding this conflict engineer is going to end up filling in in the meantime at the planning board and the zoning board. What's the status of hiring a full-time, you know, permanent replacement for Mr. Goulton?
Mr. Lockland?
Uh, we're calling three people back for second interviews, um, and I know I'm jumping from one resolution to the other, but the last resolution on your agenda, um...
With Hatchmont McDonald?
With Hatchmont, yes, provides for, um, the replacement engineering services for the months of January, February, and March of this year, so we are, um, hoping to have someone, uh, on board by April 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Lockland.
Okay, and so, uh, about those three people who are being interviewed, are any of them affiliated with this company, Delaware American Engineering?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so it would be, uh, like, real people, not hiring a company to be the engineer, be hiring a, an engineer?
We're not hiring a real person engineer.
We're interviewing individuals.
Individuals, not a company.
That is real individuals.
Are they real, Mr. Lockland?
They appear to be.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Uh, I have to ask about the lawsuit filed by Stephen Middleton.
What number, Mr. Cradville?
That's 651. Can, uh, can I get an update on the status of that case?
Uh, Mr. Shami, any news?
We don't discuss litigation, so, most I could say is it's still ongoing.
Discovery?
I think it's into discovery phase, as far as I'm, I'm aware.
Okay, who's representing the city?
The city is being represented by Benedictine Altman.
Well, that's, that's Mr. Caputo, um, city is being represented by, I believe, the Office of Homeland Longo, one of the JF lawyers, I don't know if I...
I thought he was talking about 651, what are you talking about?
There's two, one attorney for the city and Director Caputo gets his own attorney, so, taxpayers pay for both. There's an allegation in that lawsuit that, uh, Peter Magarella used a racial slur.
Mr. Cradville, as you know, you're barking up the wrong tree here, we can't, we, first of all, we wouldn't know what the, we don't get those, that paperwork, so whatever you're saying is something you heard or whatever, and we can't speak about it, the city attorney just said it's pending litigation, so we cannot speak about that. When the trial's over, I'm sure most of some of it will be public record or whatever that you get to attend, but as of right now, we can't comment on it because it's pending litigation.
Okay, I mean, how does the council feel about someone who's been accused of that, uh, being in charge of security at the, at our school?
Listen, no, no, I got it, listen, Mr. Cradville, once again, we're not going to comment on the case or our feelings about the case, okay?
Okay, I, I, just, uh, with all due respect, if I were on the council, I would want to see the litigation that was coming, and it is a matter of public record, if you want I can send you a copy of it, um, but I, I think you should review it, and I think you would be concerned by what you read, and I think, uh, it's your duty to examine all the litigation that's filed against the city.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So, Mr. Vignola is back on the payroll, I see, uh, representing the Ethics Board, um, through the chair, can you please ask Councilwoman Garladi, uh, how she knows Mr. Vignola, what their relationship is?
Ms., would you like to answer that?
Well, I, I...
Mr. Cradville, listen, you know, you're asking questions that don't pertain to what the resolution says, okay? We're talking about, if you have questions of why we're paying Mr. Vignola, that's a legitimate question. To wake it over and bring it over to Ms. Garladi is not acceptable.
Okay.
And so let's stick to the, let's stick to the context.
Well, allow me to explain, I'd like to know...
Let's stick to the context of the, of the resolution, please, sir.
So, I would like to know if Mr. Vignola is the right choice. Now, the complaint, the only business before the Ethics Board right now is my complaint against the councilwoman, so respectfully, I'd like, in the councilwoman's own words, for her to say whether or not she knows Mr. Vignola and what their relationship is.
Why isn't that what I just said to you, you just took it, totally blew off when I just said...
I know, I explained to you why it's relevant.
Okay, and I explained to you why it's not relevant, so either ask about why we're paying the fee...
So it's not relevant if the city's hiring an attorney with a conflict of interest to deal with whatever.
We're talking about the resolutions here, if you want to talk about it in the public, if you want to come up in public speaking and ask about it, you're more than welcome, but let's talk about what we're doing here, we're paying a lawyer's bill, that's what the resolution is, right? You agree?
Right, you hired him to represent the board.
You have a problem with paying the lawyer's bill?
Uh, quite frankly, if there's an improper relationship and there's a conflict of interest, I do have a problem, I'd like to know, is there a conflict of interest? Can, can you please ask your colleague to dispel that rumor?
No, it has nothing to do with the resolution, in my opinion, thank you, so ask another question on another resolution.
Okay, um, I think it's very troubling that the council being dismissive, um, you know, that this is, you should be concerned with ethics.
We're not being dismissive, we're not being dismissive.
You're not?
I think it's very troubling that you're not sticking to what we're trying to accomplish here about the resolutions. You can come back and talk about that, it has nothing to do with the resolution.
What you're trying to accomplish, with all due respect, is to, to cut a check to, to this person.
He, he did work, we're going to pay him for his services, okay?
And are you going to continue to have him represent the Ethics Board?
Mr. Shami, is he still representing the Ethics Board?
He's going to represent the Ethics Board, the Ethics Board has, has selected him, and by resolution of the Ethics Board, I believe, at their initial meeting this year, and just to correct something Mr. Cradville said, Mr. Vignola doesn't only represent the Ethics Board with pending matters, um, he also represents the Ethics Board with respect for a matter that's on appeal involving Mr. Cradville's complaint, um, which is now at the Office of Administrative Law, I believe, so he continues to represent, um, the board on that matter, and we'll see it through to conclusion, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you, I am, uh, still concerned, I'll be honest, the Ethics Board does not have a great track record, I'm glad Mr. Shami brought it up, that, uh, the, uh, the case that Mr. Vignola presided over, uh, is under appeal now, and it's costing taxpayers even more money, and it's going to drag out for, you know, more time, and it could have been settled by now if, uh, you had an attorney who played by the rules and conducted the hearing properly, but you didn't, which was Mr. Vignola.
Who filed the, who filed the appeal?
I, I appealed, and, and...
Oh, so you're causing us more money, you, you appealed it?
I'm just holding people accountable, if, at the end of...
You filed the appeal, we're costing the city more money, can we just explain it?
Right, and I filed the complaints, too. I'm not shaming...
So, you're not happy with the, with the results?
I'm not happy, if you keep hiring the same lawyer, who seems to be connected to you, he's connected to you, you, that's why he didn't, that's why he didn't preside over your case, right?
He's watching my Little League team, right, I was 12, and when I was, Dallas, Little League champion.
Right, could we get an attorney to represent the board that doesn't know any of the defendants?
Mr. Cradville, please, you're...
Doesn't know any of these people, I'm just saying.
I really think you're much brighter than this, come on, let's go, move on.
Well, thank you, I'd like to also share my concern that, uh, the Ethics Board has, uh, you know, named a subcommittee that includes someone who Ms. Garladi vouched for when he was appointed, um, so this just fits a pattern, this fits a pattern of the Ethics Board putting people in, uh, decisive, powerful positions who are connected to the people who are accused of being unethical, and it's just not, does not inspire confidence in the system, and I encourage you to find any other attorney, uh, preferably someone who doesn't know any of the council members or any of the people who've been accused of being unethical, that's, that's by two cents.
Thank you.
Uh, last, or next to last, I want to ask you about 675, is the MemCor filtration system, is this a new company or is this just a company that changed names, Ebok Worker?
Yes, uh, please, the council, it is an existing company, um, it's still Siemens product, um, they have evolved, changed names, this manual contract we go through for, uh, evaluation maintenance of the city.
Okay, so there's no difference in the contract versus last year, it's the same renewal, yeah, thank you very much. And the, uh, last one I want to ask about is, can I just get an explanation, 682, a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for the entire county, what does this mean for New Brunswick, and what is, what is a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan?
Mr. Lockland?
I'm going to ask Director Rawls, if he's here, if not, Chris Delatella.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pretty much, this is a plan that has been accepted from our department, if emergencies happen, that go outside the city, that will work with Nielsen County to mitigate, it's pretty true.
So, what kind of hazards?
Any type of hazards, so it could be natural, man-made, and...
So anything from a storm to a chemical spill or something like that?
Absolutely, we've had these agreements in place for years.
Okay, so, uh, are there any significant changes in this, this agreement?
No.
Any changes?
No.
And the agreement's available, you know, presumably through the clerk's office? Is that, is this something that's public?
Is there something that's public?
This is, this is not a public thing. This is emergency management. Obviously, it's important that we keep that stuff.
So if someone wanted to review the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, they'd be denied?
I don't know if that's the right word. Mr. Shammy, do we know? We'll look into it for you, Mr. Cradville. We don't have that answer right now, but we'll find out for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. You're welcome very much. Okay, anybody else on the resolutions? On resolutions only, please. Yes?
I have a question about, that's my first time on the city council.
David, address please.
Victor, twenty-three Division Street. About six fifty-nine, it says order for twenty-four bulletproof vests for the police department. I have a question. Does the police department not have bulletproof vests before? Are we under attack?
No, no, we've always had bulletproof vests. When we hire new recruits, Captain, if I'm wrong, let me know. We get every, every new police officer, just your new bulletproof vests.
So are we getting twenty-four new police officers?
Uh, or we're reconditioning some. There might be some old ones coming. Captain, you want to elaborate?
The vest, how about like span five years? So every five years, they have to be replaced.
I'm changing. Thank you. I had it on the end. I had it on the end there. Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions? Seeing nothing? Oh, yes. Captain Fleming, anything else?
I'm abstaining from six sixty-nine.
Roll call, please.
Can I get a...
Oh, motion.
Motion, no, we don't want that.
Okay, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. With that, move to the public portion of the meeting. If anybody would like to address the city council, please step up. I'm sorry, we're going to discuss the city market, my bad. Is somebody here from city market?
There's a couple of board members here and executive director.
Councilwoman Hank, Executive Director, New Brunswick City Market. I'm also here with some additional board members. Bruce Carnegie, Natalie Batsarow, Tracy Reggio.
Okay.
So we are here with regards to a proposal we submitted. We would like to, to ask for an adjustment in the special assessment rate tiers of a two and a half percent increase within each of the four tiers, so that we can maintain and potentially expand the home current services in the downtown. Additionally, we are looking to propose the expansion of the special improvement districts to an area where we have received inquiries from current property owners that would like to receive some of the benefits in the, in the expanded area. And I can elaborate a little bit on each if you like.
Just a little bit.
Basically, our assessment tiers have not increased in over seventeen years. With the Great Recession, it has led to some tax appeals as well as decrease in ratable, which has declined our budget. We have several programs, such as Clean Team program, which is a very valuable program in the downtown, which we continually need to cut back on in order to sustain what we currently do for our mission and for our stakeholders. We have also moved our office space. We have made a lot of changes to our service providers in order to cut our budget. And we have seen redevelopment in the downtown. We've seen numerous number of residential properties pop up. So there's many more residents in the downtown, as well as new businesses, many of which take part in the offerings that we have, which expand our, a lot of our programming. So we are looking for an increase in, in our budget to help with the, with the services. We also are looking to expand in the area of Baird Street between Kirkpatrick and North Joyce Kilmerath, Kirkpatrick between Baird and Albany.
So what does Destination Doggs, I'm heading that way?
Right, so from the post office down to where the church is, and then up towards Destination Dogs, and then back up towards Patterson to Spring. Kirkpatrick will go all the way down to Albany Street. And we've talked to several businesses, property owners and businesses in that area who would like to reach some of the benefits, especially the cleaning, facade improvements, awning improvement programs, and things like that.
That's great. So you have people that are registered and getting on board with Clean Team. Talk about some of the other things that you guys do. Do you do gum removal, I think, right?
Yes.
So graffiti removal?
We do graffiti removal, gum removal, power washing, litter removal, which is mainly via the street Clean, Clean Team program that's failing. We also do marketing and promotions. We help to advocate for the small businesses. We do collaborations with many other entities in town to help bring events into the downtown, such as the Red River Festival, Central Joseph Jazz Festival, New Brunswick Jazz Festival. We do different promotions for the retailers, such as Restaurant Week, as well as shop local initiatives to help those small businesses thrive. So we have on an ongoing basis, our budget has been flat for many years. We just can't cut it anymore. We have cut as much as we can. There are several properties within downtown that are exempt from paying a special assessment. And we continue to see enhancements. We see the firm will be redeveloped. We see on Nielsen Streets, new development coming in. We have over fourteen hundred and ninety-eight residential units in and around the downtown. So we want to make sure that those that live, work, and visit here will really be able to take advantage of a lot of the opportunities that we have and the promotions that we do.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to the public portion of the meeting. Step up and back away. Five minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Vince, Director of Seattle One Seventy-One, Nico Adman, New Brunswick. And I'm here with a group of representatives from the Feeding New Brunswick Network. You're here. Council President and council members, we are here to ask that a proposed resolution recognizing the Feeding New Brunswick Network be placed on the city council agenda to be voted on for approval. The Feeding New Brunswick Network is established to provide a means for existing food pantries and soup kitchens to coordinate their citywide activities to best meet the needs of their clients. There are individuals here representing the Feeding New Brunswick Network that will speak to how the network has benefited the communities in New Brunswick. Before that, I would like to comment on the city council considering not placing resolutions recognizing the effect, the efforts of community organizations on its agenda. The question is not whether the Feeding New Brunswick Network is doing good work. It is, and it has the potential to do much more. The question is, should the New Brunswick City Council make the public aware of this and other initiatives by recognition by resolution? Improving the resolution is a public acknowledgement that there are individuals and organizations working in New Brunswick to improve the quality of life of residents and promote social justice. It is also a mechanism for making the city administration aware of these efforts. Placing these types of proposed resolutions on the city council agenda and approval of these items are means of making public and acceptance by the city of the good work being done by individuals and organizations. Recognition of these efforts indicates that the city supports volunteerism. Recognition also provides an incentive for participation and increases in organizational capacity. It would not be good policy to discourage this type of work by not even considering whether the city should acknowledge the existence of the efforts of community organizations. Denying placing these items on the city council agenda would be perceived as taking away from individuals and organizations an opportunity to benefit from an increased public awareness of their efforts. May I sit down, Martin Mars?
Sure. Just give it to the city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you very well, Jonathan. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jennifer Apostle. I'm the coordinator for the foods program at County Food Bank. And I've been working with the Feeding New Brunswick Network since its inception. And I'd just like to share some comments with you as to the accomplishments of the group and why we should be recognized. The network has recently expanded to include twenty-two food pantries by the addition of Sharon Baptist Church, which has offered to establish a food pantry distribution center in an area of New Brunswick that's not previously been served. The network members contribute, contributed to updating a provider map, working with the Voorhees Center for Civic Engagement. The network will also be a beneficiary of information obtained during the food assessment being done by this center, which will result in improved services. The network is seeking to work with the New Brunswick City Administration to develop an emergency food distribution plan, for example, in response to severe weather, and also to be a resource for identifying unmet needs to be considered in establishing a client choice food pantry in the city. College students in, in need are underserved in New Brunswick. And the network is seeking to work with Rutgers University and Middlesex County College to develop on-campus food pantries. Network members mentor food pantries in joining the Community Food Bank of New Jersey, enabling them to have access to food from state and federal programs. The food bank is also pursuing participating in a shared client database developed by the network. Member pantries report increased volunteerism, communication, and collaboration as a result of participation in the network. The network has now become a forum for sharing information from the foods, from the food bank, and for dissemination of resources provided by SNAP Ed. The network is a means for providers to work together to solve common problems such as storage, distribution, transportation, and volunteer recruitment. Its efforts have improved the local food system by increasing access, identifying areas that are underserved, and increasing awareness of educational programs. The Feeding New Brunswick Network is doing good work and should be recognized for it. Recognition by resolution justifies the existence of this community group and acknowledges that New Brunswick needs an organization that works towards best utilization of available resources to improve food security for the people of New Brunswick.
Thank you.
Would you like to...
Sure.
Thank you.
Susan Stevenson Martin. I'm also here to ask if the Feeding New Brunswick Network be recognized by council. Basically, I am the senior program coordinator for the Rutgers University SNAP Ed program for Middlesex County. And we have offered a lot of the educational programs to the food pantry clients. The network allows us to offer these programs and be involved with research and other collaborations that allow us to enhance the services at the food pantry and to the clients. It also serves as a resource for the food pantry providers to clean more opportunities within each other, to find out how to troubleshoot certain barriers, and to overcome and to find out for more opportunities that is being offered to them and other service providers like myself, what can we offer to the food pantry? And ultimately, it's for the better of the, the New Brunswick residents and hopefully will reduce, if we will, at least at a minimum, down food insecurity at the local level.
Thank you.
My name is Louis Roll. I'm a member also of the committee. I represent Ebeneeze Baptist Church. Church has been in the community for over a hundred and forty years, serving the community. We've been running a soup kitchen and pantry for thirty years now. I was tasked by the group is to go out to the other pantries and soup kitchens and find out more or less what their needs are to help out, so the network could help them out as well. To say that since we started, there was like three or four members participating in the meetings. Now we have about a hundred percent of the pantries and soup kitchens, which is about twenty-two, twenty-five participating. What I'm saying is that the network is reaching out and helping the ones that are needs and helping also in the community that people that are, wants to open up a soup kitchen or a pantry or anything. So our job is to help and support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else with the food, with the food that works? Oh, everybody, come on. We're going to keep on the same topic.
Okay, yes, hi. Thank you for listening to us, because we have a long list of people. My name is Yvette Mullin. I'm Director of Community Services for Aligas Promise. We're a nonprofit organization that provides feeding programs throughout the year. Why am I so interested in assisting and hoping that you guys help us recognize us is that, for example, the Feeding Network has been around, right? But what's happened over the years, thanks to the New Brunswick Food Alliance, which I also took part of, or am part of, we began to see the need to expand resources, not only resources, not only feeding people, but to help understand people what to eat and how to eat culturally appropriate, healthy, organic food. And thanks to the Feeding Network, we're able to, to do that in, in more ways than others. And let me give you just quick examples, because I know we got, we don't have all day. But for example, Aligas Promise feeds a hundred and two meals, a hundred and two thousand meals per year. Last year, we had the privilege, and I was very happy to be part of it, is that we were able to identify CSAs or foods from the Farmers Against Hunger Coalition in New Jersey and provide more than thirty-five to sixty families organic, fresh produce from June to October. And we were able to then share with the Feeding Network and other pantries in the community. And it was, it was huge. It was tremendous, because we're in the business of not just feeding. We're in the business of empowering. We're, we're in the business of providing social justice and helping folks understand that they have also, not only the need, but that they also deserve to have quality food, organic and healthy. And we're also in the business of sharing with smaller pantries. And that's why this organization and this Feeding Network is important. We also try to not only expand resources, but we empower folks and educate them. We're able to tackle obesity. We're able to tackle hyper, high blood pressure. We're able to provide culturally sensitive food to a large immigrant population that's trying to understand. We're trying to understand their needs and we're, and vice versa. But thank you very much. If you have any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Greetings. My name is Douglas Wilson. I represent Quaid Church Food Pantry. I'm new to New Brunswick, though I can tell you I saw Gary Brokaw play ball live, and I dyed their greasy Tonys before the sun came on. Participating in the pantry network has enabled me to relearn New Brunswick. The group is dynamic. There is an eclectic group of people. I have had the opportunity to meet Rutgers people, representatives from the Community Food Bank of New Jersey, of course, Jennifer from the MC Foods, amongst the other pantry members. I've learned that we are all serving a common group, and that is New Brunswick residents. It has been rewarding to work with Rutgers interns at my pantry and to meet an EMRCOR's intern through the network. Aneesh has given me a pipeline to a group of volunteers to come in with wonderful attitudes. To quid pro quo, I get students to help me unload and distribute food, and I get to help develop a social conscience in them. Just, pantries are more than food providers. We're not just giving out a bag of food. We're a contact for neighbors in need, for sources of other services. This is something that the network enables us to do. I think the council should strong and consider recognizing the group. What they are doing, what they're attempting to do is vital to the city as a whole. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Walter Millick, and I'm the Director of the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry here in New Brunswick. I strongly suggest that you accept the resolution that's being proposed. At our food pantry, we have sixteen hundred registered clients. We feed them. We provide them with food twice a week. The benefit of the network is that we can now coordinate among all the food pantries to address needs that have been identified by parts of the group. We can have shared experiences, so we can learn from others, from other pantries' successes and their failures. And the endorsement of the network by the city council would be appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Susan Everett. I represent the food pantry at Emmanuel Lutheran Church, right around the corner. Like always, Emmanuel's always been involved in feeding New Brunswick. We've taken a pantry that we started in a closet, and we've expanded it to now feature meat, fresh vegetables. We'd like to add a lot more things. The city council recognizing our food, so that we can all join together, makes it more possible to offer more food, healthier options. And like our people say, we're also offering other services adding. We're also trying to add in things like diaper banks and toiletries and things that aren't covered by general food stamp stuff that people desperately need. So if the city council recognizes us, this will help tremendously in getting more services through the city in New Brunswick. Thank you.
So let me just recognize you guys right now. Just on that topic, if it's okay with my colleagues here, if they have any questions, I would like to ask the city attorney to put together some type of resolution that follows in the great work of the Feeding New Brunswick Network. So if anybody could get that to you. Thank you, thank you. Well done. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the city of New Brunswick council tonight? Anybody else like to address the council? Seeing someone there? Give it to me, sir.
I would like to know what they're going to do about the fire director down the wall, what's going on.
Fire director?
Yes.
Sir, at this time, there's a, there's a pending litigation that we cannot comment on the... Are you speaking about the lawsuit that was filed?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we cannot comment. Again, like we said before, there's litigation that's been filed. The city's been served. And so as of right now, it's a legal... and so as of right now, it's a legal matter, and we're not able to comment.
Well, who has the, what can I ask about the investigation?
Ask that what? No one can comment on it without the laws.
Would you let me know about this, when this investigation will be done?
It's going to be a long time. It just filed, we're being sued, correct?
The council is sued on behalf of the three minor children for personal injuries as a result of the incident. And it is pending litigation. Litigation takes on average from 18 months to two and a half years, may be resolved sooner or later, but unless and until it's resolved, I advise you not to speak out.
Thank you, thank you.
One more thing.
Sorry, time, we got some.
What are they going to do, are they going to fire him, or are they going to suspend him from doing what he did?
He's under the direction of the mayor, the mayor hires a fire director. I don't know anything, you'll have to ask the mayor's office.
I got one question. If I was in that position, not working for the city, but driving on the road and I hit those two kids, I'd be in jail, but they let him fly under the table.
Again, we just, we can't have it.
If I was in that position, and I'm driving on the road and I hit those kids, I'd be in jail, or I would, you know, I would be behind bars.
I can't answer hypothetical situations, sir.
I got another quick question to Captain Miller.
Sure, through the chair, yes, right over there.
I would like to, you know, I called the police department today, and I talked to dispatch 107. I told him I need a police car. Police car comes after the lady took off, so.
Did you get the license plate in the department?
No, 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 no. I called the police department to tell the dispatch, because a guy robbed by my house and.
So did they walk on foot or by in a car?
Walking.
Walking.
A lady, it was a lady, she stole a tablet, and as I'm investigating, but I called the police department, they show up at the last minute after.
What was the last time, how long it taken to get there? Was it five minutes or was it an hour?
Like 10 minutes, 15 minutes, after the lady took off and they ran around, they could have found the lady.
So you have a question?
Yes.
What's the question, sir?
My question is, it should, it should, when you call the police department.
They, the police just showed up in five seconds, they could have left two seconds earlier. I mean, you ever hear the expression, it's a matter of timing?
Yes.
So, you know, they got away before the cops got there. I mean, you know, I'm sure the captain will tell you they wish they got there earlier to apprehend a person, but you know, they got there in three minutes and they got there in one minute. Was it, say, 10 minutes it took them to get there? Captain, any response?
I don't know about the incident, Mr. Franco's referring to specifically, but I'll speak to him after the meeting, I'll see if I can advocate what time that happens. I'll check to see the response by and see what's going on.
You have to be meeting Captain Miller, get the information from him.
One more question about this, I would like to know if they can, because there's a lot of robbing going on on Delvean Street where I live, there's a lot of people out there stealing. I would like to know if they can have more patrol around.
Sure, when you speak, when you speak.
Especially, especially there's, it's getting dangerous. I got robbed already at Seaman Street, and I already, I'm still going with the case at the Superior Court across the street, because two black eyes grabbed me from behind and attacked me and broke the whole pants. They took, the detectives took picture of it, as you can verify, you know, and Mr., I don't know if Captain Miller knows about that incident.
Well, you can speak with him after the meeting and ask him about maybe some more police presence on what you're speaking of, and he'll give you a clue, see if he can help you out.
I appreciate it, President.
You got it.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Good service, Cradville.
Good evening, once again Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. I want to start by, you know, credit where credit's due, the great work of the Feeding New Brunswick Network is really inspiring, the council's going to recognize them, and it's good to see so many people come to a council meeting for something so positive. I do want to thank the city attorney for investigating the allegations I brought up at the last meeting. I received a letter from him dated February 11th, and I have some questions about it. He says that he reviewed a police report, or he cites something from a police report. I wanted to ask, can I see that police report? Is that something that is public?
Tell us what we're talking about, is it a matter of, do you have Mr. Katniss?
Correct, a crime on June 2nd, 2013.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
As the council well knows, I represent the council. Mr. Cradville brought up an incident that I knew nothing about at the last meeting, made some allegations and accusations that I felt warranted the council's insight into, and therefore I caused the matter to be looked into. As a courtesy, I provided Mr. Cradville with a copy of the letter, just so that he would have the benefit of you all knowing what I learned as a result of my inquiry.
He said thank you.
He did, and I appreciate that. But I'm not going to get into the nature and extent, or the method of my review or analysis would be cross-examined by Mr. Cradville. That's not proper. I advised my client accordingly, and as far as I'm concerned, it's the end of the matter.
Just to repeat my question, can I see the police report? Is this a public document? Can I get a copy?
Is that a public document that he can obtain, do you know?
The, the, the police report that I think he speaks of has to deal with an investigation, which is not Oprah, I mean, case law, so I believe the answer might be no, but I don't know if Mr. Cradville has a pending Oprah request out there. He wants to Oprah something, we'll respond to it as we're required to do under law.
You have to file Oprah request.
And then who decides?
Well, you know that answer, right? I knew this was coming.
Well, who decides?
Well, you're right, well, obviously Mr. Katniss is our Oprah, this is, you know.
Well, I would handle it, it deals with Mr. Katniss.
It's a conflict, I believe Mr. Shammy will look into it.
As is the case, myself looking into the matter.
Right. And so can you tell me, is the case still open or is it closed?
He said it was, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
I don't know if the case is open or closed, what I do know is that it's two and a half practically years since the incident occurred. June of 2013, I believe.
Yes, yes, you realize that.
Okay. And so the weapon that was stolen from Mr. Katniss, was that ever recovered?
Do we know the answer, or do you want to respond?
I don't even want to respond, like I said, I provided you with the information that I obtained.
We certainly don't have that information, Mr. Cradville. Why don't you just Oprah and find out if maybe your case, if you get a copy of the case?
Well, listen, if the city wants to present me with the police report, you know, I'll sit down.
Well, he just said that.
But you've not promised me the police report, so I'm not going to, you know, pass up my chance to ask these questions. So basically.
We're not going to pass up the chance to tell you that we can't give you an answer.
Okay. Well, I think you should care about this, because a former police director left a loaded weapon, I believe it was loaded, in his car, and it was stolen. He left it, left a car parked for six hours with a weapon in it. Mr. Shammy's letter, I thank him for it, and he claims that, quote, "The police report indicated that the weapon was secured in the vehicle." Can you tell me, how was it secure?
He just told you his answer before, he's not going to be stopped at the question, we're going back and forth with you on the police report. He said if you want a copy of the police report, you have to send it an Oprah request for the police report.
And he said I may or may not get it. So I'm just asking about his letter, the letter is dated Friday.
Go ahead, just ask again.
So, "The police report indicated that the weapon was secured in the vehicle. Can you please ask the city attorney to tell us how it was secured?"
The city attorney responded before that he's not going to answer questions about the case. He said that was going to be the end of it, with him answering any questions. I think that's what he said, I could be wrong. Mr. Shammy, did that what you said?
Right. Thank you.
Okay, so to be clear, the city attorney refuses to say how the weapon was secured and whether or not it was secured in a legal fashion.
However you want to spin it. However you want to spin it, you can spin it wherever you want.
Okay.
We all heard what he said.
Okay, so he refuses to say how the weapon was secured, but only says that a police report says it was, quote, "secured," doesn't say whether it complied with state law or not. But continuing, he says Joseph Katniss is a retired law enforcement officer and as such is authorized to possess and carry a firearm. Now, that's not 100% true. Retired police officers have to apply to the superintendent of the state police and have to be granted approval in order to get what's called a retired officer carry permit. Can you please ask the city attorney if he has checked into whether or not Mr. Katniss did so, and whether he was approved to carry a concealed weapon in the state?
As I indicated to the council, I'm not going to get into this back and forth with Mr. Cradville about my, what really amounted to attorney-client privileged communication that I allowed as a courtesy, Mr. Cradville to have a copy of. I'm not going to be cross-examined by Mr. Cradville regarding the matter. As far as I'm concerned, it is what it is, the letter speaks for itself, and if Mr. Cradville wants to pontificate about his theories of impropriety or illegality, he could do so, but I'm not going to participate in it.
Thank you, Mr. Shammy.
Okay, so, Mr. Shammy refuses to say whether or not he looked into whether his of counsel and the assistant city attorney, Joseph Katniss, was even allowed to have a gun at all. He refuses to say.
However you would like to say it, but yes.
Whether he did that research, whether he's seen those documents. Can you tell me, I know that Mr. Shammy wasn't the only one investigating this, I know Captain Miller might have something to say, has anyone looked into whether this gun that was stolen from the former police director was used in the commission of a crime?
You mean like when it was stolen, was it used in a crime?
Yeah, yeah, it has a serial number, it should be in the police report.
Captain Miller, would you, would you like to know that answer?
I responded to Mr. Cradville yesterday through email, and what I responded to him is all I'm going to say on that. Okay, so Captain Miller refuses to say whether he looked into whether the former police director's gun that was stolen was used in the commission of a crime. No one looked into it, or if they did, they're not willing to admit it.
That's what he said.
And you find that acceptable?
Well, Mr. Cradville, these are all litigation that was, we're not involved in the police matter. Yeah, find an example, if he doesn't want to comment on it, that's his opinion. We want Oprah requested, in two and a half years, you're more than likely, more than five to do that.
Okay, so, there's no litigation here.
Okay.
I'm asking about public information, you know, I thank Mr. Shammy for copying me on the letter, but if he doesn't want to answer for what he wrote in the letter, I think you have a big problem, because this letter doesn't prove anything. This letter proves that Mr. Shammy thinks that someone who he hired to work at his private law firm and then hired to work for the city didn't do anything wrong. I don't think Mr. Shammy should have been leading the investigation, and certainly, you know, law enforcement usually takes the lead in these types of things, but neither of them are going to own up to what they've put on paper here. So I'll just finish by asking, I noticed the parking authority director is here, can you please ask the parking authority executive director if he believes that the New Brunswick Housing Authority parking violations that were brought up at the last city council meeting, if those are legal, or if they infringe on the parking authority's authority?
Am I asking here or at the parking authority meeting?
Well, since he's here.
Okay, Mr. Karen? Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Karen.
Hello.
Mr. Cradville is asking you about your opinion or about the extra charge that the housing authority was given to residential parking, the tickets, are you aware of this situation?
Yeah, I heard about that. Actually, Mr. Cradville asked me previously about this.
Oh, so you want to bring up yet?
I guess so, but, you know, as I mentioned today, he had asked me if I knew anyone else who could write tickets, other than the lease and the parking authority, and I answered that Rutgers University can, and they normally write them on their own property. So that's my answer.
Okay, and so is the city council concerned that the housing authority's been issuing illegal tickets? That it's actually cuts into the parking authorities money?
Mr. Cradville, you're back in the room, Mr. Shammy, I have to go.
I just want to comment about the fines that they were giving to residents. There's a difference between parking in city property and parking in the housing authority property. The lease that the tenants sign has a section that says that they bring in fines of $25 if they park in yellow lines. This is a parking authority, I mean, housing authority property, not the city, not anything else. If they are blocking a dumpster, if they are parked in yellow lines, if they are blocking the area, the exit and access to the fire department, if they need to commit only areas again, which is, I think is somehow it doesn't, it hasn't been clear the way it's presented, that is just, that's property of the housing authority, and the lease does have a section and tenants do sign in that list that they do understand that. I just want to say also that prior, and I spoke to you about this, prior to you, the last meeting that we had that you brought this up, this already, we were in the work, working, I was working with John Clark regarding those fines that the tenants have received, because I have received notices from residents that you were meeting with them, talking about these fines and so forth. So we already have, you know, we had started dealing with residents, residents admitted that they park in yellow lines, that they park in front of the dumpsters, so nonetheless, Mr. Clark as a director, second director decided, gave the directive that he's not, the staff is not giving any more fines until we look at every single fine that those tenants receive and see what, you know, the amount, if it was the correct amount. So at this point, it's just the tenants, we just met with them last night also, so they are fine, they have no, the issues that apparently, the big issues that they have were not as big as we were presented with, and they're happy with the fact that Mr. Clark met with them and will continue to meet, and they also, they put, there's a human officer, there's a process that they go through a human officer when they do not agree with the fines that they have, so that is, that process will explain to them, and they will have the opportunity to meet also with a human officer. So at this point, it's up to just waiting, and I was there, I was there and I translated for some of the residents, so, and like I said, they were happy, it's been working, and I think that it's just sometimes that the communication or all the things going on kind of confuse them, but they do are, they are, like I said, they are content and they are good the fact that we met and that everything will be, you know, it's all the work and it's been good for them.
Thank you, your time is up, sir.
With all due respect, what's in a lease is one thing, the city has ordinances for parking, and if the ordinances are being violated or twisted.
Private property.
It was private property.
Yes.
Right place, right place is not private property.
If they're parked in front of a dumpster, it's legal.
Is right place private property?
There is one street of right place that is part of the city, and the other ones, that's what we investigated. We don't have tickets of anybody who parked in right place. We have those who park for the tenants that we met, I'm not saying that somebody else, if you have another one, tell them to go and talk to John Clark so they can start the process, but the ones that we have seen who was parking in front of the dumpsters, parking in the yellow lines in that area of the parking of the housing authority property.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else like to address the council this evening?
Hi, my name is Danielle Moore. First, I'd like to thank, I'm here to thank the city council, the traffic authority, I thanked the Board of Education last night at the meeting, thank Mr. Jones Jr. for everyone's help with Delaware and Livingston Avenue, due to where it's finally done, where Delaware is blocked off, the Board of Education has a security guard there to let the buses in. Now I see, due to where, like I said, it was a situation with the one, where it's supposed to be one lane, it was no help to there, but I'm glad that with the police department and the traffic authority, due to where we have an officer there to put his car right there in combs to make sure that it's now one, one lane, and I see how everything is looking much safer, and I'd just like to thank everyone who helped out and understood me, what made this location danger. I was, they let me know, give it a year and a half time, that the county is supposed to be making, working on another plan, give it two years or so, where they told me that at the traffic meeting. Now, it's pretty hard for me to do this next one, even though I'm in a lot of pain now, but I surely have to do it. Wow, that was the last meeting we were at, how we were talking. how we were talking about abandoned buildings, and how I was talking about wires, and telling you how, sure, I would, uh, never be happy with the city. Like I said, how each time that I, I, I suffer, suffer with pain, and like, where a gentleman said about the case with kids getting hurt. Like I said, I know the city never wants to pay a, 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 any, anyone, but like I said, I'm not here about to pay, because like I said, I've been taken care of, but like I said, it doesn't take away the pain. But one interesting thing, normally I stay to listen to what everybody says, says at the meeting, where I just happened to leave early at that last meeting, and wow, for me to arrive at home and to find out where, wow, I couldn't sleep, I, I, I really couldn't sleep, it had me in tears, to, to walk in front of my door, exactly what I was just talking, talking to you about. Wow, who's responsible in removing wa, hanging wires? We, how we discussed that. You can't tell me the Lord doesn't pro, provide me to have proof, to prove what the city should be do, 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 doing. That was where you said that the fire department, once they approved that it has no electricity, how you said, okay, that's where they just put the wire. But like I explained to you, just because a wire doesn't have electricity, it, it, it still can do damage. And like I said, the wow, to come home to my front door, and what do I see, what do I see? Hanging wires. Sure, the fire department was there? Well, sure, they, they, oh, like I said, it's really hard for me. Excuse, excuse me, because like I said, wow, to be a person injured this way already, and to see it as I'm arriving after speaking up at the meeting at my door, where from an abandoned building, I'm talking about loaded wires hanging there. I'm not putting any problem on the fire department, but wow, for them, wow, due to where no electricity, the same place that I showed you with these new boxes and all, that I asked you, where you said you cannot tell, uh, the companies how to do this, how, if you have to, a person has to get permission what to do to their house to make sure it's safe. I don't see why you can't order who, any companies regarding wires, boxes, to make it safe, safer. But getting back to my point where, wow, like I said, to see the fire department and have them say, oh my, that I need to call Verizon to have them come remove this wire. Like, wow, 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 I'm, I, I'll give you the pictures, but like I said, I'd like to show, make sure the public really sees what I'm, what I'm talking about. Wha, wha, like I said, wires, wow, getting, getting, how, what, anybody can walk past there, get caught, caught up, choked. What, I, how I was riding a bicycle, what, how it gets caught in my tire, comes across my neck, and like I said, to see this at my doorstep, the same exact, eh, the same exact situation. Like I said, excuse, excuse me, it's hard. One reason why normally I brighten my pictures up, but I left them dark to show you. Anything that's black, wow, you cannot see, you cannot see it out at, at, at nighttime. But, like I said, please, 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 I mean, it's, like I said, I couldn't, I couldn't, couldn't, couldn't sleep. So wow, and I came back down, came back down here, to show, so, like I said, I would make sure the city does it, because I hope they come up with a better job in doing something. But, so that was where I rushed back down here, and that's when, uh, I, I, I happened to ca, catch, uh, like I said, excuse, excuse me, like I said, it's hard for me, I'm in pain already, but still hard. That's where I, I called Mr., uh, Mr. Thomas, our administrator, where I came down here and I showed him the pictures on my camera, like, wow, he couldn't believe it too, for something to really speak about. Like I said, abandoned buildings and talking about the wires, due to where you made it like it wasn't a big situation, even I told you, it is a big situation, to show right here in the alleyway, what, if somebody walks in the door, what, now you're telling me somebody can't get injured, injured again? Where I, where I, I, I had, uh, showed it to him, uh, and this is very, really hard, like a good heart, where I'm glad you really understood, understood me, due to where he took his own time, after, it, it's just showing him, he took his own time to come back over there to see in front of my, my house, to really, to, to see what I was just, just showing him. And then that was where he ord, where he ordered the fire department to come, to come back, and, and, and to cut the wires, due to where another person's life was, uh, can get taken away, or another person couldn't get in, injured from this. So I'm here, from here on out, due to where, like I said, I know the city never likes to pay anything, even though it, it, pay, pay anybody, but it's not about that. But please, I'd like to thank you, where you, how, how you took the time to really come and see that this was an original emergency, that, that where, well, somebody else could have got hurt, hurt it, hurt it again, where you, they took the time to come and, and ordered the New Brunswick Fire Department to come back and clip these wires for the safety of, of someone else, and due to where I have to show you, where, wow, after, okay, after the firemen did clip, okay, Verizon or whoever was notified, what? See, my point is, what, they never even came to really remove anything. So if he didn't order the fire department to come back, to, to, to really, not saying that they're supposed to do, that they're, not saying that they're supposed to do it. Wow, the wa, wa, wires still, still, still out there, where they never came to get it. So my point to you is, I hope as, as of this day fo, forward, that you, you make sure, what, what, where if you're in charge of anything else in the city, believe me, make sure of something to be done, when, with these hanging wires. Because like I said, Lord, as much pain as I go through, what, it's been 13 years, but yes, each year, how, yes, I go for more, more pain and more, more pain. Believe me, I would never want to see anybody get hurt again. And like I said, that's why I do what I do, due to where it's like, some people may not believe it, but where how, I know the Lord shows me things, what, so I can get pictures to show to you what's dangerous to stop someone else from getting hurt. So like I said, as of now, I hope you do, with a situation like this, like I said, right in front of my do, door, I hope at, at this moment, you can tell me, what is the plan with hanging wires?
We're going to call Tom Lockwood.
Uh, no, no, I, I, I don't, I don't find that is no joke for you to even say anything.
I, I know, as, as, listen, I, we, we feel like we don't care about the wires falling. We're, we're, you know, we, we told you that it's not our responsibility. We, I, you, you want to call me and tell me a wire's down, we call Verizon. If there's a wire down by my house, I call the company, I call the phone, I, I call the, the phone company, or the cable company, if there's a wire down.
So you're telling me you can't say nothing to Verizon or Cable, anyone, to make sure that their property is in, in the safety of other people?
I'm going to have the business administrator call me.
Where, where you do that with people's houses, where, what, if they don't fix their sidewalk, you give them a fine, why can't, if they don't keep up with their property, you can't do a fine with them or anything?
Because you, you, the, the telephone poles are not our property.
I know, believe me, I know whose pro, property is. Like I said, Verizon wire, PSEG is pole, but like I said, what, what, what can be done?
Yes, fire clerk, yes.
All right, Chrissy, go.
I'm sorry.
Uh, if I could look into our procedures of how we leave wires that are not energized, I can also go, uh, to our reporting, uh, back to Verizon Cable, um, PSEG, to see if we can, uh, get more accountability on their side.
Very, very good.
Yes, sir.
The, um, the, the condition that Ms. Moore speaks of is not exaggerated. It was a mess. Um, it was a, uh, an abandoned four-family property across the street. So, um, cable and telephone ca, wires were cut from four different apartments, and then dragged across the street and just laid on her sidewalk. Um, so I'm grateful that the, the fire department did come back out when I called and, and asked them to cut the wires from as high as they could, as they hung from midair. Uh, they did, um, collect the rest of the, the wiring, which was on the sidewalk partially, and wrapped around the sidewalk. Um, I knew that police dispatch was asked to call Verizon and Cable Vision, but you knew they weren't coming out that night, so that's why I asked the fire department to come out. I appreciate their, um, their effort.
Thank you.
And they were, they were able to determine that it was not a live, what's your wiring?
Yes, yeah, they had already determined that it was not live electric. But, um, it is an issue. If this, these things happen in the middle of the night, I mean, we don't have a, um, a division that goes around, uh, cutting cable and telephone wire. We don't. And I was grateful that I had, I could rely on the, the fire department to do that. Um, so it is an, it is an issue, um, but dispatch, as I understand it, is required to call Verizon and, um, uh, Cable Vision for the purpose of getting their wires, uh, taken down properly. And I agree with Ms. Moore. I went, I went out there the other day. There's, the, the eight wires are still hanging from, they're, they're 12, 15 feet in the air, but they're still hanging from top above.
That was the same response we gave last meeting, is that she should call the police department, the fire department, it's her responsibility, if she gets the pole number, to call up those companies and have them come out and fix the problem. And I'm sorry that the response time was, it snapped like that, but we, 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 we gotta, we gotta keep pressing them to get out there. And we'll, like the fire, the fire, as you said, we'll work on it, we'll work on, take a look on how we can get better response.
Well, I, like I said, if, if, if you can, uh, go take action with somebody else with their property, where, where it's not up to safety, how you give a fine, like I said, to someone if they don't fix their sidewalk, if you give a fine to somebody, I don't see why you can't do the same thing, to step up and take action with, with those, the companies, so they will take care of their property.
So you want us to fine the public service or Cable Vision when a wire falls down in the pole?
And if they, if they don't come within 24, 40, I, I'm not saying the same night, but like I said, wow, in the morning, they didn't even, still, still come.
We'll have the city attorney take a look at that, if we can, uh, issue a fine to the utilities that don't come out in a certain manner.
Because like I said, I showed you, where I showed you the wires around Livingston School, and I showed you the pictures the last time. But what, like I said, this is happening too much, and I hope, like I said, the city does step up and do something about it.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with addressed the council?
I've got one more thing to tell you, but I didn't tell you.
Just one more?
Sure. This is Xavier Franco, 175, Rentson Avenue. I've got something to tell you to the parking board. When I went to the hospital for my baby, at the hospital of Alu Johnson.
Right.
Um, they told me I had to pay for the parking, for the parking, uh, valet parking, $5, which is not, when I go to St. Peters, when I have my two other kids there, I never had to pay for the valet parking.
Those good valets, go ahead.
I would like to know why.
It's not the parking authority, that's the hospital's choice. It's not the parking authority running it.
Parking authority runs that parking deck. That's what I, that's what I'm...
They run the parking deck, but they don't run the valet parking. It's the hospital that chooses to charge you $5, not, not, not Mr. Katniss.
Not, but my, my question is, why the...
No, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
But my question...
Of course, of course it is.
My question is, why the parking deck, it owns by the parking authority? That's my question.
Why what?
Why the parking deck next to the hospital is owned by the...
Because the hospital rents spaces from the parking authority. They, they, they rent, they rent spaces from them. They're a monthly tenant to the parking authority in some, in some instances.
My question is, why the hospital doesn't own the parking deck? They...
Wait a second, which deck are you talking about? The ones connected to the hospital?
Yes.
The Rockwood Johnson, that's, that's owned by the, that's owned by the hospital.
I'm talking about across the street from the...
Patterson Street?
The Patterson Street.
Right? And what do you want to know?
Why the hospital doesn't own that deck and parking?
Because the parking authority owns it. It's the parking authority that develops, our redevelopment areas, we own it. It generates great revenue.
Oh, why, why they have to give tickets to the, uh, why don't they just stop giving tickets to the residents, and take all these parking permits and all this?
It's a public parking deck.
No, 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 I'm talking about...
It's a private parking deck.
I'm talking about these high streets, you know, like, people where they live.
That's resident parking there, sir.
Why do they have all this in, 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 in the city? You know, like, you can't park or, you haven't got a parking permit for every time?
Why do we have what? What do you want to go to what we have? Why do we have resident parking?
Yes.
We have resident permit parking for the people that live in the houses there, so they can get a parking spot, and it's not occupied by somebody visiting the hospital. So the people that live there in the houses, and the college students, and whoever lives in the house, rented it out. Anything else, sir?
No, that's it, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Uh, it's been a while, uh, for us to, but back in January, Mr. James Neal and his wife ran a Martin Luther King Day. He hasn't been here for us to congratulate him, thank him, especially with Councilman Fleming. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that we thank them.
Yes, I was at the event. It was very, very nice, a great job. It was very well done, and we haven't seen Mr. Neal since. Hope that we can scare him away with our singing. Yes, who says goodbye?
I just want to say thank you to Dave Levens, Keith Jones, and everybody who was working, um, for the, that opened the Henry Guest House for the homeless, those who were unable to go to digest homes because they had many to accommodate. Um, they were there all weekend. They were 24/7, eh, in, in those, I mean, 24 hours in those three days. So I just wanted, I don't want to be without saying thank you, accommodating you for the great work that you did, and, and I know that the guests were happy with the accommodations, so thank you. And thank you, the seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Singing money, motion, jury?
Motion.
Senator.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council vice president Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council president Meagan.
Yes.